This morning time. Thank you for all the blessings. Thank you for all your benefits. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen. So we've been looking at Colossians, chapter two. Last week, we discussed from verses nine to fourteen. What we learned is about Jesus Christ in whom we all have been made complete. All who believe in Jesus Christ are complete by faith alone in Christ alone. And Christ is the head over all rule and authority. He reigns over everyone. He reigns over everything. He's the sovereign God. He's the head of, head over all rule and authority. And then we learned that in Christ, we are circumcised with the circumcision made without hands, in the removal of the body of the flesh by the circumcision of Christ. Jesus Christ was circumcised for us at the cross of Calvary. We are not circumcised according to the Old Testament, or Old Testament or Old Covenant, but rather in the New Covenant, we are circumcised because of what Christ offered at the cross of Calvary. And that is our circumcision. We're not circumcised in a physical sense as we read in Old Testament, but rather in the removal of the body of the flesh by the circumcision of Christ. Due to the circumcision of Christ, we have been circumcised with the circumcision made without hands. Our outer skin is not cut, but rather Christ offered Himself at the cross of Calvary. And through Him, we come to the presence of God. In twelfth verse, we learned about baptism. We have been buried with Christ in baptism, in which we die to sin and then we resurrect along with Christ through faith. So it is through faith. We learned about believers baptized. Only those who believe in Jesus Christ should be baptized in the working of God. And God raised Christ from the dead. And thirteenth verse we read, when we were dead in our sins and transgressions, our past behavior. We were dead in sins. We were dead in our transgressions and the uncircumcision of our flesh. But God, who is rich in mercy, raised us up in Christ. He was rich in mercy. And due to the mercy, due to the grace He poured upon us, we were allowed, we, we were resurrected along with Christ, having forgiven us all transgressions. Through the blood of Jesus Christ, God forgave all our sins. The blood of Jesus Christ covers all our sins. And that's how we have been resurrected. We were dead in our sins and transgressions, in the uncircumcision of our flesh. But God, who is rich in mercy, Allah made us alive together. And in fourteenth verse, we learned, He has canceled. Christ has canceled out the certificate of debt consisting of decrees against us. Judgment was upon us, but Christ removed that judgment that was upon us by taking our sins away. By taking, we learned about imputed righteousness. He took our sins away and gave us His righteousness. So righteousness have been, has been imputed to those who believe in Jesus Christ. And therefore, all the debts that we owed to God have been canceled out. All the decrees against us has been removed. Judgment was upon us, punishment was upon us, but God has removed that punishment away because of the sacrifice of Jesus Christ. And He has taken it out of the way. He nailed everything to the cross. And that's where we finish. So today, we're looking at verses fifteen onwards. When He had disarmed the rulers and authorities, He made a public display of them having triumphed over them through Him. So here's Paul showing imagery, a metaphor about triumph. He says, when He had, or when Christ had disarmed the rulers and authorities, Christ made a public display of them having triumphed over them through Him. All the evil forces, all satanic powers, all the demonic powers, everything was defeated at the cross of Calvary. Christ defeated the power of Satan. Christ defeated the power of evil. Christ defeated Satan himself at the cross of Calvary. And that's what Paul is trying to say. He made a public display of all the evil forces. Everything was triumphed over, everything was triumphed, and Christ gained victory over everything. A similar verse, we know, Second Corinthians, chapter two, verses fourteen, where Paul talks about the triumph. But thanks be to God, who always leads us in triumph in Christ and manifests through us the sweet aroma of the knowledge of Him in every place. So Christ triumphed over evil. And this is a known, this is, this is not a new thing to the people who lived in those times, because when Romans, they gained victory over an army or in a foreign soil, all the captives were stripped. So they will have a parade on the road, and all the captives will be stripped. And there will be trumpeters, there will be people who will be celebrating the victory. And then comes a general. A general will be behind, and behind the general will be his family, and then there will be the army. So that was a common thing that happened in those days, whenever the Roman Empire gained victory over anyone in a foreign soil, they will have a parade, an official parade on the road. And on that, during that parade, the captives will be stripped. The captives will be stripped, and then there will be trumpeters, there will be a certain group of people, and behind there will be the general, the chief general. And behind the general will be his family and his army, and there will be a parade. So that's why Paul is using that metaphor, that imagery here, so that they will understand, the Church of Colossae will understand. And that official triumph is called the Roman triumph. That was, that was carried out in those days when Romans gained victory over people in their foreign soil. There will be Senate, the trumpeters, the captives, there will be generals, as I said, and the army shouts, Lord triumph, Lord triumphate. That means they won over the army in the foreign soil. So here, Paul is trying to say, Christ disarmed all rulers and authorities. He made a public display of them. Satan, the public display of the defeat of Satan was evident on the cross or at the cross. Even though evil forces thought that they had won because of Jesus' death, actually what happened is the death of Jesus conquered the powers of evil. The death of Jesus conquered the forces of evil, the demonic powers, the satanic powers, everything was defeated at the cross of Calvary, where Christ triumphed over Satan, where Christ triumphed over evil. And that's why Paul says, He disarmed the rulers and authorities. Armed on the law, but disarmed everything. The powers have gone. No more, the, no more evil cannot conquer a believer. Evil or satanic powers cannot conquer a believer, a person who puts his trust in Jesus Christ, because Christ has disarmed all rulers, all authorities. He made a public display of all the evil powers, and He has triumphed over them through Him. Another verse which we see is John twelve, verses thirty-one, where John says, now judgment is upon this world. Now the ruler of this world will be cast out. So John says, the judgment is upon this world, where when we were unbelievers, we were supposed to receive this eternal punishment, but the ruler of this world will be cast out, that which means prince of this world, or Satan will be cast out through the death of Jesus Christ. Even though judgment is upon this world, all those who put their trust in Jesus Christ are safe in the hands of Jesus, are safe in Christ, because Christ has casted out devil away, casted out evil away. So how do we experience that in our daily life? That's what Ephesians sixteen says. Finally, be strong in the Lord and in the strength of His might. So yes, we were saved by the blood of Jesus Christ. When we put our trust in Jesus Christ, we are safe in Christ Jesus' hands. But to experience this daily is another thing. And that's why Paul says, be strong in the Lord and in the strength of this mind. It is our responsibility to be strong in the Lord, having a daily communication with the Lord, putting our allegiance to the Lord, putting our trust in the Lord every day of our life. And that is our responsibility, even though Christ conquered evil away, to experience it in our life daily is what, what helps us in a daily, in our Christian journey, to experience it really well, to be strong in the Lord and in the strength of His mind. So remember this imagery, when we apply it into our life, remember Satan was conquered at the cross of Calvary. Christ conquered the evil, evil forces, demonic forces. All His army, all His weapons were held as captives. That is the imagery that should become to our mind when we remember the cross. Yes, He was a substitute for us. He took our sins. He gave His, He gave His righteousness. At the same time, there is something that happened. He gained victory over evil. He gained victory over Satan, or He exposed Satan's deceit. All Satan's tricks were put on display on, in public at the cross of Calvary. And that is why Paul used this metaphor. Christ has triumphed over Satan. Christ has triumphed over demonic forces. Christ has triumphed over the powers of Satan. He disarmed all rulers, all authorities. And the previous verse we read, He is the head of all rulers and authority. Christ is the head over everything. Christ is the sovereign ruler. He reigns over everything. He disarms, He's disarmed everything at the cross of Calvary, and He continues to rule over the powers of Satan. So that is our identity. We trust in a God. We trust in Jesus Christ, who disarmed the powers and authorities. Verse sixteen, therefore, no one is to act as your judge in regard to food or drink or in respect to a festival or a new moon or a Sabbath day. So this, till verses fifteen, he talks about Jesus Christ. He talks about our identity in Jesus Christ. So having that in mind, having that identity in Christ in mind, now he talks about the false teachings that the false teachers of the Church of Colossae were teaching. We remember in the first class, I mentioned about the eleven or twelve false teachings that were happening in the Church of Colossae. And some of them is mentioned here. In regard to food or drink or in respect to festival or new moon or Sabbath day. So they were, they taught the Church of Colossae that only if you follow the dietary laws, only if you follow the ceremonial laws, only if you follow the Mosaic covenant or the Mosaic law, you will be saved. Not just faith in Christ alone, but in addition to faith, all these works have to be carried out to be said. And we read that in Galatians two. They also had this Judaistic problem where they were teaching about the OT laws, the Mosaic laws, the Mosaic covenant. Only if you follow the dietary laws, the food laws, the ceremonial laws, you can be saved, or you can gain access to heaven. Otherwise, faith alone in Christ alone doesn't save you. And Paul is trying to defend faith in Christ alone. Paul is trying to say, faith alone is enough. You are saved only by faith in Jesus Christ. Nothing in Old Testament can save you. The law cannot save you. And that's why he says, no one is to act as your judge. The false teachers cannot act as your judge. They are not your judge. They, only God is the judge. We have only one judge, and that is God. And He judge based on our trust in Jesus Christ, whether we put our trust in Jesus Christ. And that's why Paul says, therefore, no one is to act as your judge in regard to food or drink or in respect to festival or a new moon or a Sabbath day. To, just, I want to read one or two verses regarding that. So if you look at Leviticus, chapter twenty-three, verses two, there, it talks about Sabbath. Speak to the sons of Israel and say to them, the Lord's appointed times, which you shall proclaim as holy convocations, my appointed time as these. For six days work may be done, but on the seventh day, it's a Sabbath of complete rest, a holy convocation. You shall not do any work. It is a Sabbath. So seventh day was supposed to be a day of rest. They should not do any work. Same thing, one, First Chronicles twenty-three, thirty-one, where it says, and to offer all burnt offerings to the Lord on the Sabbath, the new moons, the fixed festivals in the number set by the ordinance concerning them continually before the Lord. So they were required to follow all this. They were required to follow Sabbath. They were required to follow, they were required to eat only clean food. Unclean food was not, was not permit, they were not permitted to eat unclean food. So all these Old Testament laws were there in the Old Covenant. But when it comes to the New Covenant, when Christ comes into the picture, He fulfilled the Old Testament law. That's what we read in the Gospel of Matthew, right? I didn't come to abolish, but rather fulfill them. So when Christ comes, He replaces all this. He not partially fulfilled them, but completely fulfilled them, or He's the perfect fulfillment of whatever has been prescribed in the Old Testament. The Old Testament law is completely fulfilled in Christ Jesus. So now, Christ replaces whatever they learned in the Old Testament, or Christ completely replaces the Old Testament law. So now they are saved only by putting their faith in Christ Jesus. If they put their faith in the law, that doesn't save them. So that is what Paul is trying to explain in this epistle. So remember these false, as I said before, these false teachers, they were trying to emphasize the Judaistic legalism. Only if you follow this, you will be saved. You have to follow all these set of laws to gain access to heaven, to be saved. But then Paul comes with the gospel of grace, and he says, by grace alone, you are saved through faith and not by putting your trust in the Old Testament laws. Mark two, twenty-seven, Jesus said to them, the Sabbath was made for man and not man for the Sabbath. So the Son of Man is Lord even of Sabbath. Christ is saying, the Sabbath was made for man. Man was not made for Sabbath, but rather the emphasis is on man. The Sabbath was made for man. So man or humans have to put their trust in Jesus Christ, not in the Old Testament laws. Galatians four, nine, verses eleven, but now you have come to know God, or rather to be known by God. How is it you, Paul is trying to tell the Church of Galatia, turning back again. So if you go back to the Old Testament law, you're turning back again to the weakness and worthless things to which you desire to be enslaved all over again. So when you go back to the Old Testament laws, what happens is all these Old Testament laws, or you become enslaved, you become enslaved to the Old Testament laws. Christ has set you free, okay? Remember when Christ offered His body as the sacrifice, the cross of Calvary? When you put your trust in Jesus Christ, you have been made free. You have been set free from the slavery of the law, slavery of Satan. We read that in Romans, in very detail. But then, once you are free, when you go back to the Old Testament law, what happens? You're becoming a slave to the law again. You're becoming a slave to the Old Covenant again. And that is what Paul is trying to say. Don't become a slave to the Old Testament laws. Don't go back to the Old Covenant, but rather remember your identity is that you are free in Jesus Christ. Once you are free in Jesus Christ, then don't go back to the weak things. Don't go back to the old elementary things. And that's what we see in Galatians four, nine, eleven. You observe days and months and seasons and years. I fear for you that perhaps I have labored over you in vain. If you go back to the Old Testament laws, if you go back to the Old Covenant, you're becoming enslaved to the Old Testament law, the Old Covenant. And the purpose of setting you be free is vain. Whatever Christ, the work of Christ is in vain. So do not go back to the Old Testament laws. Do not go back to the Old Covenant, but rather continue to put your faith in Jesus Christ. So whatever these false teachers were trying to do is they were trying to mix the old laws, the Old Covenant laws, the Old Testament laws with the gospel. Gospel plus works save you. And that is completely false according to the Bible. Only faith alone in Christ alone will save you. And remember, if we go, go to verse seventeen, he explains it. Things which are a mere shadow of what is to come, but the substance belongs to Jesus Christ. So this, all these laws, the food laws, the dietary laws, the, the law of circumcision, everything was a shadow of what is to come. Or all these laws were a shadow or a foreshadow of Jesus Christ, of the coming Messiah. So when Christ came again, the shadow is gone. You don't have to go back to the shadow, because the perfect fulfillment is already there. And that is why Paul says, things which are a mere shadow of what is to come, but the substance belongs to Jesus Christ. The substance, note that word, that substance belongs to Jesus Christ. All these were shadows. All the Old Testament laws, the food laws, the dietary laws, were a shadow of the coming Messiah. And when Christ came, when Paul talks of the Church of Colossae, Christ has already come. He has been, he is, he was dead, he was buried, he was resurrected, he has ascended to the heavens by that time. And now he's talking to the Church of Colossae about a Christ who is in the heavens, who's in the throne of God, in the seeding for them, as a faithful advocate. So now Paul is talking to them and saying, don't go back to the Old Covenant. Don't go back to the dietary laws. Don't go back to the food laws. Don't go back to the ceremonial laws. Don't go back and circumcise yourself again, because Christ was circumcised at the cross of Calvary for us. And now you don't have to go back to the Old Covenant, because all these were shadow of things to come. All these were, all these foreshadowed a Messiah, a coming Messiah. And since that Messiah has already came, you don't need to follow these Old Testament laws. You don't need to follow the Old Covenant. So remember, the basis of our freedom is the finished work of Jesus Christ. The basis of our freedom is not the Old Covenant. The basis of our freedom is not the Old Testament, but rather those laws are needed. I'll come to those verses. Those laws pointed our sinfulness. Those laws pointed what was wrong in us, but those laws don't save us. The Old Covenant doesn't save us. The Old, we read in Galatians, chapter three, the Old Covenant, the laws were a schoolmaster, they were a schoolmaster, but they didn't take away our sin. But rather, they pointed the consequence of sins. They pointed the power of sin. They pointed to sin, but they didn't save us. Only what saves us is Jesus Christ. So remember, legalism is a bondage, applying to our practical perspective. We also, right, especially in our community, in our circles, we also emphasize laws and rules. Only if you follow these laws, we all set our tradition, we set our rules, we set our own laws apart from the scripture, and we ask the people or ask the congregation, only if you follow these rules and laws, you will get heaven, you will gain access to heaven. Faith alone is not enough. But you have to follow all these regulations, set rules and laws to reach heaven, to be saved. But that is not true. And that is what the gospel says. Faith alone in Christ alone saves you. But out of faith comes good works. And good works don't determine your access to heaven. Good works determine the rewards in heaven. So sometimes we mix up things. Remember, faith alone in Christ alone saves you. But once you are in Jesus Christ, you're saved for good works, as we see in Ephesians, chapter two, ten. And that good works determine our rewards in heaven. And if you are a genuine believer in Jesus Christ, if you have put your faith genuinely in Jesus Christ, of course, automatically, good works flow out of you. And that is expected out of a believer. And that is our, that is our responsibility. So that should automatically come, but not good works that determine our entry to heaven. No, good works determine our rewards. But faith alone in Christ alone gains us access to heaven, or gains our salvation. So remember, Galatians, chapter five, verse one, right? We read that verse, Galatians, chapter five. For freedom, Christ has set us free. Therefore, keep standing firm and do not be subject again to a yoke of slavery. So Paul is talking about the circumcision, the Old Covenant. Christ has already set us free. And it is for that freedom Christ has set us free. Therefore, our responsibility is to stand firm and do not subject us again to the yoke of slavery. First Corinthians, chapter eight, verses eight, he talks about food. But food will not commend us to God. We are neither the worse if we do not eat, nor the better if we do eat. But take care that this freedom of yours does not somehow become a stumbling block to the weak. So that's the thing that we need to remember. Whether clean or unclean, the food laws don't determine whether we are, whether we are worse or better, but rather, the freedom which Christ has given us, it should not become a stumbling block. So when we are on public platforms, when we are among other people, don't be a stumbling block to them. But remember, it doesn't determine whether eating a particular food doesn't, if you read Romans thirteen, fourteen, we learn about it in detail. I'm not going there due to lack of time. Whether we eat a particular food doesn't determine that whether we are worse or better, but rather, whatever freedom that Christ has given should not become a stumbling block to other people. So remember, in the Old Testament, certain foods were classified as clean and unclean. And the, the meaning of that was, only if you eat clean food, you can gain access to the temple to worship the Lord, which determines holiness. So you're determined based upon whether, what all laws you follow, whether you eat clean food. If you eat unclean food, you're not able to come to the table, to the outer court, to worship the Lord. So that's why that law was given. Foods were determined, or foods were divided as clean and unclean. That determines the holiness of people. So when you eat clean food, that determines that you're holy. You can come to the temple with, with the sacrifice that God, God is being pleased. But when it comes to the New Covenant, it's not the food that determines us whether we are holy, but offering our bodies as a living sacrifice, offering our bodies as a holy temple, because the temple has been replaced by Jesus Christ. The temple sacrifice has been replaced by the sacrifice of Jesus Christ. So now, the temple doesn't have significance, because Christ has fulfilled that. Christ has fulfilled the Old Covenant, the Old Temple, the temple sacrifice. The sacrifice of Jesus replaces the sacrifice offered in the temple. That doesn't, none of the laws in Old Covenant holds significance in the New Covenant, but rather, offering ourselves as holy people, offering ourselves as a living sacrifice is what is required now in the New Covenant. And that's why we see, Galatians three, the law was a schoolmaster. And what does the law do? The law trains and disciplines us, preparing us. Law trains us, disciplines us, what? For the preparing, for preparing ourselves for the coming of the Messiah. So that's why Paul is trying to say, this law was a schoolmaster. The law disciplines us. Law points to sin, but the law doesn't give a resolution to sin. The law doesn't save you, but rather, law points to the sin. Law points to the consequences of sin. Law points to judgment. Law reminds them about judgment, but the law doesn't resolve judgment at all. The law doesn't save them at all. Only Jesus Christ, who is the perfect fulfillment, saves them. And that's why we see, the law was a schoolmaster, or the law was a guardian, right? And law reveals sin, law points to the consequence and power of sin, but the law doesn't redeem them. The law reveals sin, but the law doesn't redeem people from sin. So that is the difference that we need to understand. So all these laws mentioned, all these things mentioned in verse sixteen. Therefore, no one is to act as your judge in regard to food or drink or in respect to a festival or a new moon or a Sabbath day. These are all things that were a mere shadow of what is to come, but the substance belongs to Jesus Christ. Hebrews ten, one, we read, right? For the law, since it only has a shadow of good things to come, and what was the best thing that was set to come in the Old Covenant? Christ, Messiah was the best thing that they were waiting for. And since Christ has come, they're free from the Old Covenant. Hebrews ten, eleven, one says, and not the very form of things can never by the same sacrifices, which they offer continually year by year, make perfect those who draw near. So just because you offer these sacrifices, it doesn't make you perfect. And that is why the writer of Hebrews is pointing to Jesus Christ. Otherwise, would they have not ceased to be offered? Because the worshippers, having been cleansed, would no longer have had the consciousness of sins. So the yearly sacrifice they were offering every year gave them a reminder of the sins that they did. It didn't give a resolution, a permanent resolution for their sins. That's why we see in Hebrews ten, three, those sacrifices, there is a reminder of sins year by year. It was just reminding them about what they have done. It was reminding them about the sins that they did every year, but it didn't redeem them from their sins. It didn't forgive their sins. It was just a reminder of sins that they were doing every year. But only Jesus Christ came to the world to redeem them from their sins. And Jesus Christ was the perfect fulfillment of the Old Covenant. Jesus Christ was the perfect fulfillment of the Old Testament laws. And that's why Paul says, things which are a mere shadow, I hope you understand now, all these things, whether it is new moon or following food or drink or in respect to festival or new moon or a Sabbath day, everything, all these laws were given in the Old Testament so that they point to a Savior. All the laws that are prescribed in the Old Testament point to the need of a Savior. They pointed to sin, they pointed to the reminder of sin, they pointed to the consequence of sin. And because of that, they needed a Savior. And now the Savior has come. The Savior has taken our sins away. The Savior has taken our shame away. The Savior has taken our punishment away by nailing all of the sins to the cross. He has disarmed all powers and authorities. So now we don't need the Old Covenant, but rather, the New Covenant, all what we need is a Savior that saves us from all sins. So we don't need a reminder of sins every year, as the Old Testament people were doing, but rather, we need a Savior every day of our life. Not just every year when we offer a sacrifice like the Old Covenant people, but rather, every day of our life, we should recognize the need for a Savior who saves us from all our sins, every day of our life. Romans twelve, one, we talk, we read about worship, right? As a living sacrifice, every day of our life, it's a daily reminder for us to worship Him in His holiness, as the Samus says. And we should offer our bodies as a living sacrifice. Christ has already set us free from sacrifice, Christ has sin, but to experience that daily, to taste the goodness of the Lord daily, offer our bodies as a living sacrifice, in our words, in our deeds, in our actions, twenty-four seven is the worship that is required by the law. So remember, all things in the Old Testament are a mere shadow of what is to come, but the substance belongs to Jesus Christ. Then we go to verse eighteen, let no one keep defrauding you of your worship of angels, taking his stand on visions he has seen inflated without cause by his fleshly mind. The first, the first impression gives, might make us feel that is a very hard thing. So what Paul is trying to say is, these false teachers, they were trying to impose all these laws, right? These false teachers were trying to impose all this Old Covenant. In addition to that, self-abasement, we're just mainly talking about asceticism. In addition to that self-abasement, we're just mainly talking about asceticism, ascetic, or don't be involved in the worldly things, but rather take an ascetic stand, be separated from them, be separated from the world. In a sense that completely, don't indulge yourselves in the worldly traditions in a worldly way, but rather follow an ascetic life. That's what the false teacher were trying to say. They were trying to impose the worship of the angels. You should worship not only God, but angels too. So they were imposing all these kinds of weird old, weird laws. And those were the false teachings that were carried out in the church of Colossae. But Paul is saying, let no false teacher, let no one defraud you of your prize by delighting in self-abasement and the worship of the angels. So how is our prize determined? We know, first Corinthians nine twenty-four. Do you not know that those who run in a race all run, but only one receives the prize? Run in such a way that you may win. So our run, what is our run? It is our Christian journey in this world. Once we are saved, we are running every day of our life to receive that praise, the prize, that reward in heaven. And we are running, seeking Christ alone, right? Putting our faith in Christ alone, the author and finisher of our faith. And we're looking on to Jesus, as Hebrews, the writer of Hebrews mentioned in Hebrews, chapter twelve. So all those who run in race, they run, but only if you put your focus on Jesus Christ that you receive the prize. If you turn your focus away from Christ, you won't receive the prize. So that is what the writer is trying to say. Run in such a way that you may win. And how can you win? Only if you consistently focus on Jesus Christ. Only if you consistently put your trust in Jesus Christ. Only if you consistently put your allegiance in Jesus Christ, then every day you can run in a manner where finally you will win the prize. Philippians three fourteen, Paul says, I press on toward the goal for the prize of the upward call in Christ Jesus. God has called us in Christ Jesus. And what is our responsibility? We should press on toward that goal for the prize of the upward call. Christ has called us for a purpose, and our responsibility is to run in a way that we may win. And we should press ourselves, perceiving, Hebrews twelve, we will read about it. Perceivance in faith, perceivance in Christ Jesus. We should perceive in this world to receive that prize that is set for us in heaven. Colossians three twenty-three. Whatever you do, do your work heartily as for the Lord, rather than for men. So whatever we do, it should glorify the Lord, Jesus Christ. So whatever you do, we should do wholeheartedly and do it as you do it for the law. So remember, Christ is the temple now. Christ, the sacrifice of Christ has replaced the sacrifice in the Old Testament. So now we don't need to put our trust in the old law. We don't need to put our trust in the old covenant, but rather, our responsibility is to put our trust in Christ Jesus. And that is why Paul says, things which were a mere shadow of what is to come, substance belongs to Christ. And now let no one, no false teacher can defraud you of your prize by delighting in asceticism, or self-abasement, and the worship of the angels. They don't determine whether you are saved or not. Asceticism doesn't determine whether you are saved or not. Or delighting in asceticism, or delighting in the worship of the angels, don't determine your salvation. But rather, put your trust in Jesus Christ. And so that's why he says special knowledge, he talks about visions. So these false teachers in Colossae, the church of Colossae, they were focusing on special knowledge, deep knowledge, worship of the angels, special visions, asceticism, all these can save you. So faith plus works saves you, is the gospel that they preached. But Paul is coming here, he preaches the gospel of grace, and he says, only faith in Christ alone saves you. Nothing of this matter, no old covenant laws save you, because Christ has fulfilled the old covenant. Christ has fulfilled the law in the full covenant. Christ has replaced those laws in the covenant. And those laws give you a reminder of sin. Those law point to sin, those law point to the consequences and the power of sin. But those laws don't resolve sin at all. Those laws don't save you at all. Those laws don't redeem you at all. But it is only by the sacrifice of Jesus Christ that you are being saved. And your responsibility is to continuously focus on Jesus Christ. Continuously put your trust in Jesus Christ. Asceticism doesn't save you. Worship of angels doesn't save you. Gaining deep spiritual knowledge or visions don't save you. The basis is scripture alone, right? The word of God is the only foundation that which we should stand. And that's what Paul is trying to mention. Inflated without cause by his fleshly mind. And then verse nineteen. And not holding fast to the head, from whom the entire body, being supplied and held together by the joints and ligaments, grows with the growth which is from God. We read that Ephesians four fifteen, right? But speaking the truth in love, we are to grow up in all aspects unto him, who is the head? Who is the head of church? Jesus Christ is the head of church. And from whom? From whom? From Jesus Christ. The body, the body is the church. Being fitted and held together by every joint supplies, according to the proper working of individual parts. We are all part of the body of Christ, right? We're all different parts of the body of Jesus Christ. And we cause the growth of the body for the building up of itself only in love. So without love, we cannot grow as a church, as a body of Christ. Only in love that the church can held herself together, right? Only in love, and that is what Paul is trying to mention. That is the Christian's walk, right? The body of Christ grows or holds the ligaments, everything together, only in love. Love is what holds us together, nothing else. So we should hold ourselves in Christian love. First Corinthians twelve twenty-seven. Now your Christ body and individual members of it, each of us are individual members of the body in Christ. So what is our responsibility? John fifteen four. Abide in Jesus Christ. Abide in me and I in you, as the branch cannot bear fruit of itself unless it abides in the vine. And Jesus Christ is the true wine, as we read in the gospels. So neither can you unless you abide in Jesus Christ. Since we are part of the body of Jesus Christ, our responsibility is to abide in Jesus Christ every day. Not just when we were saved, but every day of our life, we have a responsibility, a duty to abide in Jesus Christ. And that's why he says, I am the vine, you are the branches. He who abides in me and I in him bears much fruit, for apart from me, you can do nothing. Apart from Jesus Christ, we cannot do anything in this world, only in Christ. Only when we abide in Jesus Christ, we cause the growth of the church. And verse nineteen. Not holding fast to the head, from whom the entire body, being supplied, held together by the joints and the ligaments. We all are a part, individual parts of the body of Jesus Christ. It grows with the growth which is from God. It is God who causes growth, not our works, not our mind, not our strength. But we, sometimes we think we are the ones who hold the church together. No, it is Jesus who is the head of church, right? Jesus is the head of the body, and we are just individual parts of the body. But our responsibility, yes, we have a responsibility, hold ourselves together in love. And we should, we are, being the individual parts of the body of Christ, hold ourselves in love. And together in love, we can grow to the measure, the full measure that Christ has set before us. And how can that be attained? By abiding in Jesus Christ every day of our life. So today, what did we learn? We learned about a Christ who disarmed the rulers and authorities. He made a public display of all evil forces. So now evil doesn't have victory over us. Evil, the power of Satan, the power of evil forces, the power of demoning forces were conquered at the cross of Calvary. Jesus Christ disarmed all rulers, authorities, all evil forces at the cross of Calvary. And our responsibility is to live in that power of the cross. Live in the power of Jesus Christ that he gives us through the empowerment of the Holy Spirit. And then he says, he triumphed over the evil forces. So therefore, no one should act as a judge. Only God is the judge. All the old covenant laws, food, or drink, or festival, or new moon, or Sabbath day, they don't resolve your sin. Only Jesus resolves your sin. They were a reminder of sins, but they didn't, they didn't resolve your sin. They were just a mere shadow. They foreshadowed Jesus Christ, but the substance belongs to Jesus Christ. All the laws in the old covenant were a shadow of a coming Messiah. But when Messiah came, the covenant laws have gone away. Now Christ has replaced the law. Christ is the fulfillment of the law, and Christ is whom that saves us. And then Paul says, let no one defraud you of your prize, of any laws, but rather, we should hold fast together in love. So remember, it is Christ who saves us, nothing else. No works of us saves us. Yes, good works flow out of true faith. Good works determine the rewards in heaven. But remember, it is faith alone in Christ alone that saves us. So that is, let that be a reminder for us when we worship the Lord today morning. Let's pray.